Yes, we have a static issue in the audio.
We tried fixing it, but...
I'm hoping it will calm down. No, we can't shut it off.
Because we're recording.
Because we're recording and broadcasting. I think it's just the speakers in this room.
I'm gonna turn the clock back four minutes, we'll start on time.
You ready? We're ready.
It says, "Call to order and roll call of the Willimere Park Planning Commission, July 11th, 2013."
Thank you. Mr. Devoe?
I'm here.
Mr. Watson? Ms. Mattingly?
Here.
Ms. Probst?
Here.
Mr. Rollinger?
Present.
Mr. Schrader?
Here.
And Mr. Vogel?
Here.
Chairman Devoe, we do have a call this evening with six members present.
Well, let us start this evening off with the Pledge of limitations. All join.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we had a chance to read the previous minutes?
I did.
Anybody have any corrections, additions to our minutes of our last meeting?
I have none.
Now, we're looking for a motion to approve.
I would so move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Do it by all together, I think it's easier. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Minutes are approved.
You.
Requesting or public hearing, I think, who's up for that? At least, huh? Okay, thank you.
Stephen, you could help with the lights.
What case do you want to write into the record?
This public hearing case, please, yes.
Let me do this before Lisa starts. For CUP 13-003 for Catamount Power Sports, request for conditional use permit, approval of an off-highway vehicle showroom, sales office and repair center located in the Central Business District at 310 East Highway 24, Willimere Park, Colorado.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, I'm here to present to you a request for a conditional use permit for Catamount Power Sports at location 310 East Highway 24. And our applicant, Paul Scheck Snyder, is here tonight so he can answer any questions that you might have following my presentation. Briefly go over the conditional use request as it's presented. The request is to take the previously used building for the Synix Gas Station, which was a total of 3,093 square feet, and utilize this as an off-highway vehicle showroom, sales office and repair center in order to rent, repair and sell pre-owned OHVs as well as motorcycles, but not automotors, automobiles. And this would be categorized all as power sports. And according to Section 18.09090, which is our use table for permitted uses, we've slated this as Section F, which is entitled Automobiles, RV, Travel, Trailers and those for the sale, services and rental use number two. And that particular table requires that this use in the Central Business District where it's located undergo the conditional use process. Because off-highway vehicles entail several types, I'm just gonna briefly describe it as it's described with the National Off-Highway Vehicles Conservation Council. And I've listed these different types for you here. We have off-road vehicles, or ORVs. We have recreational off-highway vehicles, or ROVs, or in other words, it's also termed side-by-side vehicles. Also, one you'll recognize, all-terrain vehicles, or ATVs, and off-highway motorcycles, or dirt This next slide here is to show you the property zoning, as well as the local zoning and surrounding properties. Circled in red, you'll see the site. And this is in the light blue color, which is Central Business District. Again, Central Business District for a wide variety of retail and business uses. We also have to the east, the community commercial, in the fuchsia color, and to the west, a little bit of urban residential. But within that 150 feet and directly surrounding this business, we mostly have Central Business District uses. To the north, you can see and will be familiar with several of the businesses that are located in the commercial plaza, Papa Murphy's, we have Banana Belt Liquor. And then to the west, we have a property that's owned by Church Light Ministries. And to the south, we have the South Platt Fly Shop. To the west, we have another fly shop, I believe it's Peak Fly Shop, several storage units. So there's a wide variety of businesses here located in this area. And also, not listed on this map, but in this general vicinity, there's also Daryl's Automotive, as well as Big O Repair. This next slide here shows the Catamounts Power Sports site plan, and want to briefly show you, there has been in the past, and I believe there's a staircase right through here in the interior of the building, and that's how it's going to be split up into retail with the northern yellow, it's highlighted in yellow on his site plan, for the retail and rental of his OHVs. And then, the blue to the south is the service portion, which is the remaining 1493 square feet. The canopy will remain as it is, and there'll be some display off to the side of Highway 24 here. And you'll notice the sign here, the sign will remain. And there are several parking spaces, all surrounding this structure, there are 10 of them. And then, up to the top, the north, which is up by Banana Belt Liquor, right in front of that, the commercial center, there are three shared spaces that are shown in due diligence in his contract. So, and it's centered in between three rights of way, as you can see as well. Now, when staff looks at a conditional use permit, we assess it to Section 18.57, which shows us, lays out for us the 11 criteria that are relevant to a conditional use permit. I'm gonna briefly go over each one and how this complies to those criteria individually. The first criteria is that the use shall have a demonstrated direct need to be at this particular location. And going back to, again, there are several fly shops, the Peak Fly Shop to the west, there's the South Platt Fly Shop to the south, and there have been other similar sporting retailers in this area, there was a gun shop to the west at one time. So it does fit within that schema, that type of retail, as well as the Central Business District being accommodating retail and businesses of this nature. It's a high-visibility location, and there's an enormous parking lot, which allows for access with large recreational vehicles, as well as vehicles with trailers, which would accompany OHVs much of the time. And the potential impacts have been mitigated. The second criteria has to do with the use not endangering or the public health or welfare. And we justify this by the fact that the remodel compliance will follow International Building Code, as well as fire marshal requirements. The use and sale and rental will be compliant with all relevant local, county and state regulatory requirements as well. Criterion number three has to do with the use not injuring or creating injury to the value of vicinity properties. And again, this is zoned Central Business District, so it accommodates a wide variety of retail and businesses, so this would fit right into that, as well as those directly adjacent sporting retail facilities to the south and to the west. And our applicant has taken this a step further and visited with some of the neighboring businesses to find out how they would feel about this use, and it's all been very well received. The neighbors have come back to him, and actually, they're enthusiastic to see this property, which is now abandoned and vacant, be taken over by a use. Criterion number four has to do with the use being in harmony with the area that it's located, and that, again, taking it back to those sporting retails already being in this area, this is Central Business District, so the use fits right into what Central Business District's intent was for retail and other businesses. Criterion number five talks to how the use shall conform to the provisions and objections and policies of all the city plans. And I've shown you here a snapshot of the future comprehensive plan map. Circled in red, again, is the site. And the violet on this particular map represents mixed use. And in mixed use, we have both retail and commercial. So for future outlook, this use shall fit into that future outlook just very nicely. It also supports several of the comprehensive plan principles of economic development and tourism, as well as community well-being, education, health and recreation, and parks, trails and open space. Criterion number six talks to how it shall conform to all the city regulations. And one of the things that our applicant has also done is he met with all of the city departments, as well as the county and the fire department on June 11th, and we discussed all the things that he would need to do to make this use happen at this location. And all of those things have been discussed with him. He understands the requirements that he'll need to meet in order for a zoning development permit for his remodel, as well as for occupancy of this particular site. Criterion number seven talks to how this use would affect traffic that's generated in the area. And the applicant has gone out and had a trip generation letter done. This trip generation letter actually indicated that this use compared to its previous use would decrease the traffic slightly. The average daily trips were estimated at 87, which is under the 100-trip threshold that you would need to indicate further traffic studies, a traffic impact study. As also part of this traffic-generated criteria, we also assess parking. And this has changed a little bit since your staff report, and this is due to the fact that we've gone back and asked for a little bit of clarity on the site plan. The site plan that you are shown, attached to your staff packet, doesn't list the number of parking, and there was a little bit of confusion as to how many parking spaces there were actually going to be. We've calculated those, that does come up to 13, not 14. And the other thing that we've re-looked at is the categorization of our uses. The parking code that regulates the number of spots in 18.39 talks about auto repair and retail business auto parts stores, but it doesn't really take that down further to an OHV or recreational vehicle use. And in further exploration of details of what those bays would consist of with the applicant, it was found that the bays are actually different than in an auto bay. An auto bay would have a standard, a stationary lift that takes up much more space as opposed to an OHV, which would be less space. There's a floor jack, it's mobile, and you can actually do several different types of OHVs in one bay. So, per our discretion, found in 18.39.020E, which states that staff, when it doesn't quite fit into the table of parking requirements, can adjust that number to be more realistic to the use, since the table may not accommodate or account for that use. We've done so. We've lowered the bays to 1.5, that gave us 4.5. So the total requirements came out to be 12.5. And as you'll note, all those changes have been done in blue on the slides here. Criterion number eight talks about the use meeting the appropriate regard to topography, as well as any man-made hazards. And the topography involved in this particular use is not challenging at all, there's nothing that would indicate some mitigation efforts, but this particular use would entail some hazardous type of liquids potentially, and so we've asked as part of a condition that the applicant provide us a plan, listing all of those hazards, and then also detailing how that particular hazard would be cleaned up if it were spilled. And he has already come back informally in response to comments and provided me with two details, that the motor oil would be stored in 55-gallon containers, which would be emptied by Safety Clean, and that if there were liquid spills, they would be picked up by clay-based absorbent type of material, and if required, he would also have those removed by Safety Clean. Criterion number nine talks about the use needing to accommodate adequate water supply, waste disposal, protection methods and waste drainage, or water drainage, excuse me. And this area actually worked in the applicant's favor in that this facility was at one time a restaurant, and the water was, it exceeds his use, that he's going to use it, because it was a much stricter water setup with connections and whatnot for a restaurant. And the utilities director has also reviewed this and found no concerns. And also, the shop will use an Aquarius or a water-based parts cleaner, which doesn't produce fumes, which means that the air quality impacts will be low. Criterion number 10 talks about the use needing to not induly increase the public's danger. And again, going back to, it'll meet International Building Code, the fire marshal is going to be involved in input on what he, and has already talked to him about what he needs to do to meet those requirements. There's also that condition for the plan detailing the hazards. And also, if you're curious, those fuel pumps, they've already been removed. Criterion number 11 talks about the use needing to be required to provide architectural design schemas, amenities and other aesthetic enhancements. And really, there are no proposed changes to the exterior of this particular building. The applicant understands there may be some requirements as far as fencing and other amenities, and is open to those. So staff feels that it meets all 11 criteria and is recommending the approval of this conditional use permit. And there are several conditions that we would like to set. These first two relate to the timing of the zoning development permit approval and occupancy. And I'll just read these verbatim, as I want you to absorb all the content. "The applicant shall provide the city with a comprehensive motor oil collection, storage and disposal plan, describing how waste oil will be disposed of with a specific name of the service to be used, or a list of service to be selected from, and method for dealing with oil spills and cleanup. Prior to occupancy, the applicant must receive approval from Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District and the Teller County Building Department for an OHV retail rental and service center." And then there are five additional conditions that we've added, and these are to be adhered to by the owner at all times. "The areas outside the building shall not be used for repair of OHVs or storage of parts or damaged vehicles. All OHVs shall either be washed at a commercial-equipped washing facility, or the applicant will install any required measures to accommodate onsite power washing capabilities, such as sand traps or grease traps. OHV use, retail, sale, rental shall comply with any relevant local, county and state requirements, for example, registration and titling. And the canopy lighting must be turned off during non-business hours. As each row of those lights in the canopy can be operated and shut down individually, if he does on very rare occasions need to do some moving around in non-business hours, he would be allowed to turn on one row for a short period of time to accomplish those things, in order to make sure that he's safe in doing so." And lastly, a separate sign permit for both permanent and temporary signs shall be submitted and issued in compliance with Section 18.48 of the zoning ordinance. Are there any questions? That I might answer?
Are there any landscaping requirements associated with this permit?
No, there are not. This is not a site, this does not entail a site plan review, which is triggered if the value of the improvements is at least 50% of the value of the property, and it won't be so. There would be no need for landscape requirements.
Thank you.
The gasoline that's gonna be needed for the rentals?
Yes.
How is that going to be handled?
Gasoline needed for the rentals? It's a good question. I think what I'll do is I'll have the applicant answer that for you, if that would be okay?
It's his turn anyway, questions are later.
Did you want him to answer it now, or should we just wait until...
Either way, just item four, as we ask both you and the applicant.
Okay. I think I'll let him answer that, if that's okay with you?
All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You'll be back.
Okay.
State your name and all that other good stuff that ties with that.
Paul Scheck Snyder, hopefully Catamount Cycles, or Power Sports, soon. The gasoline will need to be stored in a container less than 25 gallons in order to not require a special permit from the fire department. So it will be a fuel-approved container on wheels.
We'll let you do your presentation, if you want to, and then we'll ask questions later, that's what it calls for on our procedure.
In matter of speaking, you don't have to have a presentation.
Okay, I don't have a presentation.
Okay, then we'll go to questions.
Well, will this be something that the fire department will be involved in, the storage of his gasoline and the proper usage and handling of it?
Yeah, as part of the review process for the zoning development permit, fire department will be involved through the Teller County Building Department as well, in assessing any requirements that he would need to meet through for the fire district. So any requirements to mechanical equipment that he would need to install, as well as any hazardous materials. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rollinger?
I have several questions, surprise, surprise. And they're both for staff and for the applicant. First to the applicant, are you the owner of this property? In other words, has it closed? And are you the owner of the property at this point?
No. We close on August 31st. And it is conditional upon getting the permit.
Was that property bank-owned?
No.
At that point? No?
It was, it came out of foreclosure in 2009, I believe.
I was here at the time that the previous owner...
Synix.
Synix. Wanted to operate a convenience store and a service station on the site, so I was just curious to know what the transition was. You intend to sell pre-owned OHVs?
Yes.
Just super round numbers, how many of those would you have on the floor for sale at any one time? You've got a lot of space, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, for sale, I would think 10.
Okay. Question for staff, were the Bakers, which are the closest residents?
Yes, that's correct.
They've been contacted?
Yes. We have sent out adjacent property notification letters in accordance with our guidelines within the day thresholds that we're supposed to, and we've received no feedback either way from any of those letters that were sent out.
I've spoken to them personally as well.
Ah, good.
And they're all for it.
Okay. Oh, the pumps have been removed from under the canopy, well, what about the underground tanks, are they still there?
They are still there, in case the next owner wants to start a gas station as well. But in the contract, they'll have 30 days to remove the tanks or properly mitigate them to give us a no further action required letter from the state.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Other folks?
I have another question.
Go on.
Okay. The section that you're wanting to do the repairs, it's all glass.
It's glass on two sides.
Except, you know, you're gonna have to put base doors in there in order to get the equipment in and out?
No, I had thought about that initially. I went and measured those doors, those double doors are big enough to fit any current manufactured OHV through, and I need to keep it on a budget to start the business. So for the start of the business, it will be moving them in through the double glass doors, which is not uncommon with an OHV company.
And you would have air filtration to filter the air?
Yeah.
When they're running and the fumes and stuff?
Yeah, there's a fume extraction system in there.
Okay. I think that's all I have, thank you.
You both? I have a few. Is there currently a grease trap system in there from the restaurant?
We believe so, but we have not found it yet.
Okay. When you deal with sand and oil and antifreeze, which you'll deal with all of those, I'm assuming some of those are water cold?
Right.
That you deal with. Is there, obviously, there can't be a drain in your bay area, or you would have to mitigate that. So there's no drain in the bay area, Florida?
I don't know.
Okay, but if there would be, not just washing, but you'd have a situation if you have an antifreeze spill or any kind of the equipment that drips off of the vehicle. That's, I think, a requirement by the county that you do that. I know you said you were gonna look at washing them someplace else, but there's other fluids that can get on the ground that a grease trap would normally take care of. But I don't know if there's a drain in the middle of that. Grease trap might just be for the sinks. Just a thought for you to look at.
I'll look into it.
Because those aren't the least expensive things in the world.
Didn't they have to have a floor drain?
I would imagine, yeah, I would think.
Because it went from the Vista Mart to the Williams.
Yeah, if there's one there, it'd save you a whole bunch of money.
I would think.
That's already there.
Because it was a restaurant.
So, do you think the floor drain is required, or is not required?
It's not a floor drain.
Should not be.
If you put any kind of chemicals such as antifreeze into our city sewer system through spills or anything like that, you'd have to provide some. We'd probably be better off not to have a floor drain, just clean up with clay, like you said. Just something to look into. You talked about, well, Ms. Parnell talked about the different types, the ORVs, the OHVs and all that. Are any of those like rock crawlers, off-the-road vehicles? Because I don't think they'll fit through the double door.
Right.
And you can't tune them up outside.
Pardon me?
I don't think you can work on them coming to this outside.
Right, it wouldn't be anything that would require a stationary lift, like a rock crawler.
It wouldn't be like a full-size vehicle like that.
Right, exactly. They're all small. It would all be, it would only be vehicles covered under a Power Sports license from the state.
Okay. Do they require any kind of... Do they require any kind of, since you'll have a lot of two-cycle equipment in there for your, I'm sure for your, for your off-road dirt bikes and things like that?
I'm sure there will be some in there, yes.
Outside of just the existing hood that was there from the restaurant? I know when Michael's motorcycle had to put in OSHA-approved equipment to take that out of the atmosphere. I didn't know if you'd looked into that or not.
Was, no, I haven't, but I believe Michael's required it because they had a dyno in there. So, they were running the machines in there. And I, I won't have a dyno.
Okay. But part of it was so that they, was a noise, they had to soundproof that room. And it was, they had the sound, they had to soundproof that room, that was part of the conditions of use of that, when they went in there.
Okay.
Mainly it was Harley. Harley's getting noisy. But I'm just wondering if you're looking at that part of it. You're going to have to tune them up inside, I would think. And that's going to require, you're going to have...
Well, we aren't going to have a dyno, so we aren't, we aren't planning on running the machines.
You put in plugs and points, and you start something up. No?
I don't, I don't plan on running the machines inside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But I can always look into it, so.
Are you going to have bicycles?
Um, I hadn't planned on it, but...
Okay. I just think it's unnatural, because people come up here and want to go out riding.
Yeah.
Might be something interesting, something that...
I have a pretty nice tandem from the fifties that my son and I restored. I might show it in there.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Anybody else, any other questions? Anything else for Lisa? Not hearing that, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to the open the public comment section. So, we now have a public comment open. This would be a good time to recognize our summer, our summer assistant.
Volunteer.
Volunteer. Do you like to say your name and do a cheer for...
I'm a student of the university, bachelor's degree in science and a pre-law program that they offer. So, just back to the summer, I'll be back September, which then I'll be off doing military service with the Navy.
Thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot too much.
We're quite happy to have you.
Okay. A hearing, no requests for public comment, we'll close the public comment section of this meeting. That would probably let us skip by rebuttal from the applicant, and also let us go to asking any final questions that we may have. If not, then we can begin our own deliberation. And do we have any thing we want to, some things we want to talk about?
I think it's great.
Or are we ready to go to a motion in a sec?
It's great. Empty building. Doesn't look good. It's on the main street. There have been various and sundry types of vehicles marked for sale, parked out there.
And boats.
Or whatever, which didn't look all that great coming up, coming up the highway into town. So, this is a, this is a real plus. This is a real win. And I wish the applicant luck.
We encourage a motion in a second. Are there any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve conditional use permit number thirteen dash zero zero three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any other further discussions on the motion in a second? It's on the floor.
Do we need to stipulate those six conditions by staff, the recommendations?
Those eleven items that you've talked about.
I'm sure the motion are intended to include the...
Yep. Subject to the...
As presented tonight, because there were a couple that were added. If you would like, I can give you those to read.
Yep. Subject to the, to the six conditions enumerated on page six.
There's seven of them that you could just say as presented tonight.
Seven?
The ones that are presented tonight.
Ah, all right. The ones presented, see?
And since he emoted, made his motion, do you still second it?
I still second.
We still have a second. Okay. We're probably ready for a vote.
Thank you. Devoe?
Yes.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Trader?
Yes.
And Vogel?
Yes.
Good luck.
If the motion passes unanimously, this does move to the city council agenda next Thursday.
Yes, the first reading is next Thursday on the eighteenth of July, and then the second reading, public hearing, will be on August first.
Well, good luck. That concludes our hearing portion.
Okay. Are we going to have a meeting?
We are. A work session.
No, no, no. The next meeting.
Oh, the next meeting. Our next meeting is going to be July twenty-fifth. There is a case, we have a new Starbucks, which will be an amendment to the Walmart PUD, PBD. And with that PUD, PBD that was approved back in two thousand six, all of the outlots are required to come to planning commission for architectural review as well. So, you'll be seeing that.
And there's a picture in the hallway of City Hall of the artist rendition of the new Starbucks that's going there, with the drive-through, I believe.
That's correct, yes. Which lot is it in? It is on lot number two, which when you come into the driveway around the curb, and you're about to go down to the parking lot, it is the lot just to the right. It's marked with a public notice sign as of yesterday. Well, I see it didn't work yesterday, so you can see it.
If that concludes that, motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
For adjournment? We've got to go down to adjournments.
To our work session.
We're giving you too much time for this next meeting.